Is that in there?
Seven forty-eight. Uh, we're gonna start the business meeting. Would everyone please stand up and leave it? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first we will start with public input number one. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for public input?
You know the drill.
I do. I do. I just have, um, there's a couple of agenda items that when you guys go through, uh, sometimes there's not a lot of discussion. And I figure I ask my questions first so you can discuss it during discussions. Resolution number thirteen, which is the extracurricular activity for Hofstra University. In the, um, agenda, it states that, um, there's no fee for the students. But there seems to be some fundraising going on for the hotel rooms. So, if we could just maybe get a clarification on that. I donated for that, so I just wanted to know. Number sixteen, I would like to, um, I hope you guys have a good discussion about this. But on it, your part B is, um, should a final presentation to board be desired? I think that your due diligence should be, that there should be a final presentation for the board and the public, since it is money being spent, uh, that wasn't budgeted, and it is a hot topic. And, um, to add it in after, you might be able to have negotiated in a better rate, because a presentation, I think, is definitely necessary on that. And then on number eighteen, if you could have some discussion on, um, what exactly core BTS is and the daily rate, that would be great. Um, and then my other final thing on old business, October seventeenth, uh, the minutes from the athletic committee stated that we were concerned about athletes not eating. Um, I'm still concerned. I understand it's going to policy committee. That was four months ago, and two sports seasons ago. March fifth, we'll start our final sport season, and the athletes don't have a decision, nor was it communicated to the parents. So, in old business, I hope that we can get some sort of resolution to the parents and to the athletes. Um, and I want to say that the musical was absolutely amazing. That Spirit Night was done phenomenal again, and, um, it was a pleasure to attend all those events. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for public input one? Okay, then, we will move on to our superintendent's report, and we will start with the elementary school field project presentation. Mr. John Longo from VBS Landscape Architecture.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm good. I've seen it lots of times, so I'm, I'm good.
How's everybody?
Because I pretty often don't take these questions after.
Okay, uh, thank you for having me. I'd like to update the board with, uh, the progress of this project, which is the elementary school field court and plaza, uh, work that we're going to be doing this coming summer. We currently have a, uh, SED building construction permit for this project, so we're, we're a little bit ahead of schedule where we thought we would be. The reason for that is when we submitted the plans to the state, we requested a level one, uh, review, and they had authorized, uh, the level one, and we've received the comments and addressed all their concerns, so we, we've been permitted. Since then, SED has gotten rid of level one reviews. So, we got that in, uh, pretty much under the wire in September, and towards the end of October, they, they stopped the level one reviews. There's a whole new process that they have, so, um, we, we got lucky in, in that regard. Uh, just to get, get your bearings here, understand where we are. The elementary school is over here, uh, Clinton and Atlantic at the bottom. So, we're, we're talking about the field, the plaza, and the court. Um, some of you have, uh, I think I was here last year around the same time, so some of you have seen this, uh, before, other, there's other, some of my members here. So, as part of the bond project, there was additional monies from not doing the field, uh, the park field out here. So, that money was reallocated to an improvement plan for the elementary school, which is what this, this is representing. So, as part of the bond, what we're gonna call the bond improvements, we're working on the athletic field, the, the front plaza, and then the court down here along Atlantic. Um, additionally, we're gonna be doing some safety improvements with some new railings along the boiler room area way, that's, uh, on this side of the school, and additional barrier railing on part of the rim. That's a continuation of some of the work that we did two summers ago. So, as a blow up, this is the front plaza. On, on this side, there's a couple of benches and an old, uh, brick wall that we're gonna be taking out, putting in a, a small seat wall in here. All the paving will be completely removed. It's currently unsafe and uneven. Um, it's plowed in, in the wintertime from the maintenance trucks. So, what we're gonna be putting back is a, is another concrete surface, but it's gonna be more durable, it's gonna be thicker. We're gonna add a, a dye to it, which gives it a more, more character, and a scoring pattern, which again will give it, um, more visual interest. We're not gonna put a pavement down, because they're not, uh, very durable, and, you know, asphalt and stuff like that, so, in, in meeting with all the stakeholders, which included, uh, administration, staff, maintenance, um, you name it, PTA, myself, others, um, we had a couple of conversations about what we felt the best surface would be, and putting back what was there seemed to be the best so- solution, but putting it back in a, in a more attractive manner. There's other things that we're showing adjacent to this, and I'll get into that, as, as we're identifying future improvements. Um, I'm gonna touch on that in, in a minute. So, down at the court, which is at the, at the Atlantic side, this is unchanged from the last time I was here. There's some differences that are in here, but this is, this is largely unchanged, and as I said the last time I was here, you know, painted games that were, that are being depicted are, are flexible and malleable, they can change. Um, we're rebuilding completely from fence to fence, the entire court. So, it's only fencing, curbing, pavement, it's a, it's a painted asphalt, which is an acrylic, uh, textured acrylic coating, like a, like a deco turf tennis court, not a rubberized surface, it, it is an asphalt surface, and various, uh, ball games that are, that are gonna be painted on there, as well as some of the other games like four square and hopscotch and things like that. Those will be replicated back out on the front plaza too, in the manner that they are now, but we're gonna have the district do that, because they did such a wonderful job doing it in the first place, the stuff that's out front there now. It doesn't make sense for us to have our contractor meddle with that stuff. He's just gonna give you the canvas, and then you guys are gonna put back what you want, whether it's for, you know, dismissal or arrival, and, you know, there's, there's the games that are there, and the queuing areas for the, for the children. So, that's, that'll all be put back in some manner, but just not by our contract. This is the timeline for the project. As you can see, we submitted September fifteenth of, of two thousand and seventeen. We had final approval, which actually was, we, it came on a Sunday at six o'clock. I got an email that we were approved on January twenty-first. Here we sit today, on the twelfth of February. Moving into next week, we'll be making our final plan revisions and getting ready to advertise the bid, which will be March first, with plans and specifications available March eighth. A short bid period, around a month, so these will coincide with your board, with your Board of Education dates. So, it is a little longer bid period than I wanted, but we're shooting for the April eighteenth of meeting, so that we have a full week to do any reference checks and things like that. If there's a, an extension of the bid required, because some of the contractors come late to the process, they, a lot of times, you know, it's like kids doing their homework, they wait till the last minute to put their bids together, and they call me tonight, they want to say, hey, can we extend the bid? If we don't have a lot of traffic in terms of client holders and people that I know are gonna bid on the project, sometimes we'll allow that, that process to go a little bit longer. Um, month of May, excuse me, will be contracts and submittals, and after field day and, and everybody's wrapped up over there right around June twenty-third, you know, that Saturday, we hope to have bulldozers rolling in there and, and construction commencing, so that we can hit a target date of August thirty-first, uh, for the court, and all the projects will be done. I want to emphasize that, the court plaza and paving will be done. Uh, the field, when I write playable here, the sod will be going down towards the end of, of August, and then we'll have that knit in, where we, we want the grass to grow for, you know, a month or so. And we'll monitor that, and we're projecting somewhere around September twenty-fourth would be the time the kids get back onto that. And that's gonna be important for PE and, and, uh, the gym teachers to know what, where they can and can't play out there for that first month of school. All right?
Before we move on, a question on that. Just two things. One, will, will the elementary school be housing summer school again, uh, this coming summer?
Oh, that's the plan, yes.
And what, what is the timeframe of the summer school?
We, um, believe the fourth of July is midweek, so we'll start the Monday following, and then it runs for six weeks, so usually the second week of August, we end, and then there's a few weeks between summer school and the start of the new year.
So, while summer school's going on, it sounds like the field and the, the plaza and all that will be off limits. Will they be coming in? They, they, they'll be able to enter the school?
The construction, yeah, the construction for the court will occur from the Atlantic side parking lot.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the only way to get up to the field will be through the double gate that's in the plaza, to drive up there, as well as deconstruction and reconstruction of the plaza. So, I would say everything from the arch over is gonna be kinda off limits. Kids, if they do need, uh, access to recreation and stuff like that, as part of the summer school program, that'll have to be a monitored thing, probably geared towards the playground area.
And we can, and we can enter the building from the Hampton Street side.
Right, that's, that's what I figured.
Correct.
And then in terms of the field, um, what will the, um, kids be doing at recess? If they feel, they'll, they'll just be specifically on the playground and using that half of the, the yard?
Specifically, the summer school, you mean?
No, I'm talking about September.
When the kids come back to school?
If they come right, back right after Labor Day, what's the plan?
Yeah, yeah. The hope would be that we can get them out there towards the end of September.
Right.
But they're gonna have to adjust their programming accordingly to accommodate for the lack of field there.
So, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the area that's gonna be sodded will fence that off.
Yes, there will be still some green space that we're not touching.
So, like the, the playground?
Where the shade trees are, yeah. Where the benches and shade trees are, behind the pla- between the playground and the field, that, that's a sizable space.
As, as well as the court will be done.
Yes.
And once school starts, there'll be no construction going on, we'll just have to stay off the grass, but there won't be a lot of people coming and going in that yard during the day.
Construction should be principally wrapped up before the kids get back.
Okay.
That's my, that's my goal, and it's not, they're doing something wrong.
Okay. So, I'm just thinking of access to parking lots and kids running around, obviously.
Absolutely, right.
Can I ask a question? Is there any way to do this timeline so that the field is playable when the kids come back at the beginning of September?
The optimum time for putting the, the sod down is, is towards the fall. If you told me you can disrupt your field day and all that fun stuff that the kids do the last week of school, and I can get out there a couple of weeks ahead of time, then I can get you back a couple of weeks quicker in the fall, but I don't see that as being a viable option, especially with what that represents for the, especially the kids concluding their time at the, at the school. You know? So, the next slide is budget. Uh, I just wanted to give you, oop, a little aggressive here, budget. Um, and then part of the re-alike, the reallocation of the funding moved one point four five million dollars across. Pearson came in at sixty-three thousand five ninety-nine, which was forty-three thousand under the projected budget, and these are, these are rough numbers, fully loaded. Uh, these are construction dollars, actually, not loaded numbers. Uh, the grounds equipment, we had a line item for fifty thousand, we put that aside, we hold that, we know that they purchased some equipment, I don't know if they exhausted that dollar figure, but we don't, that's not part of my money, so we don't look at that. Our estimate was six hundred and sixty thousand for the summer work at, at the elementary school. We hold the construction contingency, which I'm carrying, is the, I'm gonna say we have no money for that, because I know certain things we're tracking, uh, in different directions for, for this building and other bond projects. So, that's a, that's really a bond contingency. So, if needed, that money could come across later for other improvements, but I, I'm pretending that none of that exists. So, I'm, I'm working hard at that number, which gives me roughly seven hundred thousand dollars for a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, so I feel very comfortable going to bid with your project, that I'll be able to award you a project in the high six hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Why some of these other monies important? Because there's a preferred site plan, okay? I showed you the bond site plan, which is what we budgeted for when we put the real allocation of the money together. This represents all of the brainstorming and dialogue that we had with those stakeholders, and some of the improvements that are, that are felt, that are additional, that are needed on campus to make things better and safer. I'll go through a couple of them quickly. Um, a wooden guardrail up at the front of the school, that would be placed behind the existing hedge, and then there's the fence that's there. And again, that would be vehicle rated barrier, so that no car could come off of the road and into the playground. We had a very casual conversation about that item probably over a year ago here, so we're, we're replic- we're indicating that as a potential optional item for you. Some of the other things were, uh, the, this brick walk is becoming very uneven and very unsafe at the, as the winters keep coming, you know? We've had twenty-something days below freezing, and then now we're in a, in a really wet thaw cycle, so pavements don't react well to this type, to the types of winters we've had for the, for the last three years. So, one of the thoughts would be to remove the bricks, maintain the, uh, the sponsor bricks, the ones that have all the names and stuff on them, and reuse those in, uh, in an area down here, which we're calling a gathering space. That would be an area of, of, uh, like seat walls and, and shade trees, could be, uh, the intention would be an area for the parents to queue as they're waiting for dismissal, okay? Get some off the plaza, let's, let's, the aides and everybody worry about the kids, not about the parents, until it's their time to, to switch over. Some of the other things are additional plantings along the side of the parking lot up here, further, uh, removal and replacement of the balance of the concrete walk that's out in front of the school. Okay, uh, the money that we allocated in the first phase, I would say, the bond, it's all square foot driven, so we have fifty thousand dollars, I can do X minus square feet. That unfortunately doesn't do campus, that does a lot, but it doesn't do everything. So, all this concrete in here was replaced as, as two summers ago construction. So, what we'd like to do is take a price to see if that's an affordable option to replace the, the balance of the concrete up here. And one other item, uh, was, right now, your walking path goes around, uh, the field in this arrangement, so it exists here. So, what we would do is continue it here to make a loop circuit, so that about seven times around that field would equal a mile. And again, that's just a, another thing for the pro- for the PE program and the gym to know, okay, kids are gonna go out and run a mile, they're gonna run a half mile, a quarter mile, how many times is that? So, now we have a, a way of gauging that activity as well. And again, that kid, that can assist in, in other, the other grades as well. People are coming over here to practice, they can utilize that, that as well.
What would that path be made of?
It would be the same crushed stone that it is now. It wouldn't be a hard paved surface, and...
Wait, it's crushed stone that the kids are running on? Because there's a trail that goes all around that playground, you know, the one I'm talking about that they use for...
Yeah, it's, it's kinda dirt and, and crushed rock, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was sand.
It's not paved or anything like that. One of the other things would be too, currently, they plow right down the middle of the field to allow the kids to walk onto campus, so it would be continuation of it in and through the gathering space and up into the plaza over here, so walkers would be able to come onto campus that way.
So, how much does that cost?
We haven't budgeted that yet. These are options that we're here to discuss with you. What, what we did, what we will do is, if, if all are in agreement, is we'll ask the contractors what they cost, and then you all can make a decision whether any of these options are things that you want to have included with this last phase of the, of construction.
And is that, if we have extra money, then we can go down the list of...
Correct. That's if, that's if my math holds up, and I have a balance over here, including this, um, we'll have to talk, you know, with finance, uh, to find out if that money still does exist, but on paper, we have a, a balance, we should have a balance, straight away, of, you know, forty thousand dollars, let's, let's hope.
But you won't know till the end of everything else.
I won't know till I take the bids. I'll have all the prices at the same time, which will be the base bid, which is the three bond improvements, and say, or any one of those five options that we decide to include on the bid form, we can have them price them out. There's no obligation to the district to, to proceed with any of those, we're just gonna quantify and understand the value of them, and it could even lead to future budgeting for you for fiscal eighteen, nineteen, say, those are good, we now know what we think they're gonna cost, and we can budget for them appropriately.
Can you go back one for me?
Mm-hmm.
To money?
Yep.
It's all about the money. So, assuming that we come in at six sixty, if I'm reading this right?
Yep.
The bids come in at, at what we budgeted, and we have a balance of forty-three thousand nine oh one, which is where you're getting your seven hundred and three nine oh one.
Correct.
Right? Wouldn't we also have another sixty-three thousand oh eighty-four?
Yes, you do, but I'm not representing that right now, because I don't wanna promise you.
And I got it. So, if the bids came in for what we promised first, at six sixty?
Correct.
And you could accomplish a whole or a portion of, no one's gonna dispute, I don't think.
Sure, you may be tracking with ninety thousand.
I don't think anybody's gonna dispute that all of those things are wonderful things, and the elementary school would benefit, and we'd be...
Right.
Very happy to do all that. Then, you know, depending on how much it costs, you technically have a hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
But, but at least in the previous bond projects, the contingency you hold on to to the end, because you never know how things are gonna turn out, right?
Well, right.
Right. No, no, I meant at the end, at constr- at least the way we've worked with other bond projects, there's contingency that you don't spend until you finish your construction.
Right.
Because you're still getting invoices.
Some of the things like the wood guardrail and the hedge planting, what we would do in that scenario is if we thought there was gonna be some one person conditions, where we like to hold our five percent construction contingency?
Right.
We would ask the contractor to hold his pricing for those other items for sixty days, ninety days, so that come September, we say, oh, we didn't use our contingency, please put in a guardrail, please put in the hedge.
We locked in the pricing for the time.
Correct, yeah.
We wait till efforts die to do that.
It's such a, I understand, Kristen, you're right, but it's such a small window that I think we would know quickly if we, if we had a hundred and three thousand dollars to...
Yeah.
I, I, it always boggled my mind that I felt like the kids truly are exposed on the front portion of...
They are.
Yeah, so...
They are.
And here's what happens with contractors, is while they're there, they, it's almost like they don't mind.
Yeah.
You know, while, while they're there, they're, you know, they have...
There's a benefit to having them on site and giving them additional work, because you're gonna be...
Absolutely.
And they'll, they'll do that little lift. They'll be like, you know what, since we're here, we're at Sag Harbor, we'll, we'll do this lift, and we'll do it in an economical cost.
Correct.
And they will give you the sixty days, but if you ask them to come back later to do the...
Yeah, it's not...
It's a one, they'll be like, no.
I get it, you just don't wanna, at, at the end, realize you needed some of that contingency and you don't have it.
Right.
We're not looking to overspend before we break ground, but yes, right, that's a hundred percent correct.
Okay, thank you, that was wonderful.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Exciting.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just do, just about the, the track thing. Uh, isn't there, Matt and Eric, a route that the kids take behind the swings, and I mean, the whole playground piece, and, and is that all crushed rock? I thought that was like wood chips or something.
I, I don't know specifically up here, and I apologize, because I never walked that portion of it.
But Matt? Right, but Matt and Eric would go.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe, um, crushed rock would not be the best description, like a, like a stone dust is what I've always, it's always been described, that's what's...
But is, isn't there another material that might be better for like a whole running path around the whole thing?
Yeah, anything would be, uh, you know, it's, it's, anything we do besides the, the stone dust, like I said, is gonna be significantly more money.
Well, but what about wood chips?
Wood chips I wouldn't recommend for running surfaces.
You can't run on that, wood chips.
Why not? You did trail running.
Yeah, but it's, it's little kids' ankles, and I wouldn't recommend that to you.
Yeah, I, I, you can't.
You know, as, as your designer and in my license, I wouldn't give you a wood chip jogging trail there.
Yeah.
I would recommend a hard, hard surface.
Some of their organic, um, compostable, cow dung.
The thought was, as Katie said, with contractors on site, to, to make the most of this space while, while we're working on the field.
This, this is a nominal, nominal cost, this part, yeah.
If we were able to put in that measured track, it would, of course, support what we do at the elementary school, but also could assist, say, a middle school track team, or even high school across country, if they wanna do timed, timed runs during the week as they're getting ready for meat.
You don't want crushed...
No, I think then you may wanna, you know, price out other options, which could be what, you know, some schools have, different track surfaces.
So, if, if that was gonna be part of our dialogue of pricing out and considering it, where does that fit into the timeline then? Because that's a different, that's taking it a different direction, but it makes sense while we're having the conversation.
While we're doing it.
It's, it's, it's as simple as me saying, uh, option one is a stone dust, a walking, running track path, and option two is a asphalt surface, which would be two inches of asphalt on top of, you know, a, the compacted grade.
Is that what most of the running surfaces are around for track and other stuff?
Track is a rubberized, a half of an inch of rubber on top of asphalt. Um, that's gonna put you in a price where, if I show you that cost, you're gonna quickly realize that that's not an unaffordable one at the moment, with the little bit of money that we think we're talking about having as reserve within this project. That could, you could do an asphalt pad and always put rubber on top of that as a later project. There are two processes that have to happen independently from one another, so it wouldn't matter.
It could be staged.
Right, but you're never gonna put rubber on it. The elementary school parents were never gonna put rubber on top. So, whatever it is that goes there is gonna stay there, so if it's...
Yeah, I mean, we could, we can ask for five different prices for five different types of pa- path, and you guys can make that decision in June if you want to.
But I'm sure that you guys offline can talk about what organic horse manure you can put there and come back and tell us.
I think the concept of, of completion of the path around the field is a good one, and I think it could just warrant a little further dialogue as to what that surface is comprised of, and we'll just take it from there.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Yep, have a good evening, guys.
Thanks. You too.
Moving into principals reports on upcoming events.
Who's up first? I think yours slides my board. High schools first.
Mr. Nichols.
Not sure, to be honest, give me one second. I think it is.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, I wanna go through this rather quickly. Um, I'll start with some past, uh, events. Rachel's Challenge, um, was held on the sixteenth, and Students in Grades, Mike, was it nine through twelve?
Six through twelve.
Six through twelve, we had two different assemblies, right? And then we have a little bit of an outgrowth of that in terms of the student group, correct?
Yes, a smile clock.
Yep.
Good. Admissions game, uh, this is a gentleman who's appeared here before, uh, was held on the twenty-fourth, that's sort of, uh, some insight into the college admissions game, if you will, and some information that helps parents navigate that. IB Information Night, Mr. Guinan hosted that on the twenty-fifth. Uh, Spirit Night, Mr. Gramoff did a wonderful job. The gym was packed, I thought we might meet our capacity that night, was a little worried, but, uh, it was a tremendous success. Hampton Music Educators Association, the second and third. CPR training for the seventh grade on the first. I-Tri parent meeting. Uh, Suzical, the musical, they did a piece over at the elementary school on the seventh. The middle school musical was this past weekend, and Conversations with Administrators was this past Friday. Uh, Ms. Carrier, you wanna talk a little bit about some of these events?
All right, so, we're, we changed gears, because we've been doing PS I Love You Day for a couple of, um, years. Last year was our first year of Sticks and Love.[1689.33] of years, last year was our first year of Sticks It's Love, it's where the grades can be six, seven, and eight, and they create a mural out of closets, and then the winning grade gets a special present, we're trying to figure that out to go with the guidelines of wellness. And then on the fourteenth, we decided through the sixth grade team and through grading meetings that we're gonna have a compassionate cafe, twelve teachers to five students who are gonna eat with our children that day and mix the children up so that they're sitting with different friends. We obviously let them go out and play after twenty minutes, but we did wanna eat with them for four years.
High school orientation for eighth graders scheduled for the fifteenth, midwinter recess, the college fair, Wes Motto hosts that on the sixth of March, Conversations with Administrators, the next meeting is the ninth of March, Suffolk County Music Educators Association, which is the entity that sort of organizes all county and those kinds of things, is the tenth and eleventh, I think those are the actual performances, I think in Central Islip, and parent teacher conferences, the fifteenth and sixteenth of March. And I believe this is the, this picture was taken this morning, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're fast.
A smile, so that's the check from Toshiba for, I think it was eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
That Mr. Maloney, who's this gentleman, he's spoken to you before, he applied for that on his own, and that's to fund a purchase of equipment that's gonna enable him to do some interesting things down in the tech room. There's some pictures of seventh grade CPR training. They look pretty happy there. Spirit Night, again, Mr. Bramhoff did a great job, this was really thoughtful because he got the kids all pumped up by having them eat pie in front of all their classmates, that was good. Some pictures of the middle school musical.
That was fabulous.
Fabulous.
Just fabulous. She outdoes herself every single time.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Malone, any questions? Do you want the cooker?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols, good evening, everyone. Just to review some of the past events at the elementary school, as always, our PTA sponsors some wonderful family opportunities throughout the year, especially during the winter months, some of the indoor opportunities are things such as a movie night, they offered actually a matinee this year, the movie Sing, that was well attended. Up in our library, our media center, there's a lot of new opportunities for students and Ms. Wilson, who's running that great space, has been sponsoring some different events and most recently she did a strategic games tournament and that culminated on the twenty-ninth. A lot of kids got really engaged by what was going on up there.
Oh, Mr. Malone, let me interject, she's also been taking the, working very hard with the robotics and she took our, oh, I'm gonna go blank, Scott.
Little bits.
The little bits.
Oh, yes.
And she sent me video, which I meant to have put in here, of the students making their first, taking their apps where they could...
Their first creations.
Their creations, so they make their own machines.
Yeah.
That will, they'll have a whistle or an alarm, or it'll climb or do something, and they were fourth graders that have now invented little machines with them.
Yeah, it's great.
And the video was amazing, watching the kids just explode with excitement, that they had like security alarms and they made new things.
Yeah.
So that, that's really exploded.
There's a lot of great energy up there, thanks to Ms. Wilson, it's excellent. Mr. Nichols mentioned the middle school play, the Suzical, and they were amazing, actually the group came over to morning program, as Jeff said. We actually have a musical theater after school club, so some children get their first taste of performing and that group did Peter Pan for the morning program audience on the thirty-first. We had our very successful science fair on February first and then the next day, we held our annual Super Bowl, which is that opportunity to not only make a prediction about the game and the elementary school to get it right, three to one on the Eagles, so they picked the right, but most importantly, a donation is made to the food pantry. There's just a few pictures of some of the activities that go on throughout the morning, here's the Peter Pan performance, a lot of great actors and actresses. Some shots of our science fair, very well attended event, it's great to see a gymnasium packed for something other than athletics, it was a great, it was a great night. Here's a shot of the Super Bowl, we used the technology to take us live to the big game. And these are some shots of a winter wonderland dance that just happened this past weekend, again, the PTA sponsored this, it was Saturday, early evening in the elementary gym, a lot of kids had a chance to shake down on the gym floor. A few upcoming events, when we come back from the vacation, we'll be getting into our orientation season, we have an orientation for parents of incoming kindergarteners on the first and then on the fifteenth of March, the same event for incoming pre-K parents. Our buddy program at the elementary school is live and well, our fifth graders will take their kindergarten buddies down to Buckskill Winter Club for some ice skating on the second. The Wax Museum is on the sixteenth of March, our fifth graders are really excited for that event upcoming. And then we'll close out the month with our parent teacher conferences and the preparations are on the way for the multicultural night, which is on the twenty-third. Most have been, but if you have not been to that event, it's a wonderful event for the community. So if there aren't any questions, I'll hand things to Mr. Fisher.
The multicultural, what is it, in the high school gym?
That takes place here in the high...
Right, okay.
Six o'clock, I believe, is the start.
Evening, just quickly wanna review all of the information from the last meeting, last week is available on the website, it's broken out separately so that there's two different recordings, one for the budget portion of the meeting and one for the actual meeting itself, you can also find the full presentation, the PDF of the full presentation up on the website as well. And Ms. Teich, you added something to the website just for you? You'll notice at the top of the website now, there's a link that now points you directly to the 2018-19 budget information, so it's, also appears under the announcements and through other places, but it is much more obvious now and quicker to get to, so that's on the top of it. And just to follow up on the discussions that we had last week, you'll know tonight on your agenda that you're being asked to approve the appointment of the Network and Systems Specialist One position, we went over the slide deck last week with the comparison of the cost for making this transition, so that's on your agenda for tonight. We're also looking to extend a contract that we currently have in place, we're a temporary staff member from Core BTS, as you'll recall, our Network and Systems Specialist Two took a position elsewhere and we were not able to fill that position, so we opted to go with Core BTS as the provider for the temporary staffing person, and I'm thinking the recommendation that we continue with that agreement through the end of the school year to give us more time to determine what's the best course of action moving forward. And lastly, I'm asking you to accept my recommendation and improve an appointment for the website maintenance.
Oh my God, I got scared, I thought you said resignation. Everything would fall apart, go.
Thank you, I think that's a compliment.
It is.
Recommendation, I'm asking you to accept my recommendation, in case I mumbled that, and improve an appointment for the website maintenance technician position previously held by a former employee, that same Network and Systems Specialist Two is no longer with us, previously held this position, and basically what it is, is it's a backup to me to assist me with the website as needed, so if I'm not available or if there's particular tasks that that person gets assigned to do, so it's basically, you know, a split of the responsibility, so we're just looking to continue with putting someone else into that role. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. DeSova.
Hello. Stella Maris, we are meeting with the architects of BCK IDI Group regularly through video chat, thanks to Scott. They have a really good understanding of what our needs and wants are for the district. We met with all stakeholders and whatnot for input and make sure we're giving the district what the district wants. We also touched on network and security, we're in the planning stage of that, we connected the architect with the district service providers, including Core BTS Interlogic Solutions. We'll be able to interface Stella Maris with the rest of the district, which is really great news. And we can continue to maintain the infrastructure of Stella. Well, John Longo just presented, we have great news, on January twenty-first, we received approval, so we should be getting our permit within the next two weeks. Pearson, windows are still in fabrication for the nineteen oh seven section of the building, I don't have a time when they're gonna be done, so we can break down and start replacing those windows, but as soon as I hear something, we'll definitely let everybody know. We're staying on top of our icy saw marks and snow removal, we've been experiencing this winter, the crew continues to maintain a clean appearance of all three campuses. We are performing preventive maintenance on all equipment, oil changes, tire replacement, increased fittings, fuel treatment, et cetera. That's all I have this week, thank you.
Good evening. For athletics, last couple of weeks have been very busy, the community has really come out to attend some of these events, obviously Spirit Night was a big hit. We just recently passed the deadline for combining for next year and I've been pretty much spending the last month and a half working on that. We had a program-wide basketball practice, I thought that was very instrumental in kind of completing the journey, it's nice to see the little kids playing with the, you know, the elementary school kids playing with the varsity kids and that was instrumented by our girls' basketball coaches. The first responders' basketball game was good, Mr. Malone had a great game. That was also a wonderful night, we were able to raise over three hundred dollars for the food pantry and present them with that check on behalf of the first responders, that was a charity that the ambulances decided that we would play our game for. It was a fun night for all. Boys' basketball and cheerleaders senior night was held on two seven and then the following night was, I did all that in one week, huh? But it's, girls' basketball was the following night and this year, it's looking like they won't be their last game in our gym, and I'll get to that in a moment. Tomorrow morning is the seeding, we'll find out where our teams are playing, there's a possibility that we can have a home game here for the girls and boys respectively Wednesday and Thursday night, so we're keeping our fingers crossed, I'd like to pack the gym a couple more times before the winter's over. First practice for spring sports, varsity and JVs is the fifth, we'll have our athletic committee meeting on the first, I'm sorry, I skipped over that, that's where we'll have a presentation with the huddle technology, which will be presented to the athletic committee and I'll invite the coaches and the board members to also attend that presentation as part of the athletic committee. And then we'll have our first practice for middle school sports. Wellness, on the wellness front, during Spirit Night, and we had a presentation by the Federico family about the blood drive that they ran and their grandfather's honor, it was very nice.
Can I make a comment about that?
Yes.
When I went there, I saw a lot of Pearson students volunteering their time and they had, I think they had two or three, and they each did an hour all through the afternoon and evening and they really were wonderful with the community, so I wanna do a shout out to all our great students who participated.
Well, speaking to Karen Federico, who was a daughter of Jim, she said that the Red Cross is now like referring to it as the Federico Blood Drive, so it's, the event is, it's really grown, it's a nice community for a good cause. Unfortunately, I think the numbers might not have been, they could have been a little higher, except on the second point here, we are battling the flu across the board in both buildings and so we met with the training staff and the coaches and this is of the utmost important, we're trying to keep everybody healthy, so we've been washing everything down as much as we can and I have been meeting with some vendors to try to replace some outdated cardio equipment that we have.
Can I ask a question about the whole flu prevention thing? You know, there are some facilities where they'll have like stands with, you know, with cleaner in them, do we have, I've seen like bottles here and there, but do we have those stands around or do we feel like we need to just do more because it's just been such a bad season?
We went low-tech on this one, we actually, we actually put a hand sanitizer attachment to the ball cart, so every time the athletes go and get a ball, they can...
I didn't mean in the game, I meant in the building, so it wasn't...
I think there's one, Chris, if I'm correct, Franklin, you walk through the front door at the, at the front desk, I think we have one.
Yeah, we actually have them in the rooms.
You do?
Yeah.
All right, I just didn't know it here.
And there's some mixed reviews about the hand sanitizers because they, it should be just an alcohol-based, because some of them have, you know, perfumes and that kind of thing for some children, so they really encourage hand washing, that's hand washing and using tissues and blowing into their sleeves and I know that, I know that they've had presentations at morning program about that and I know our teachers here in the middle school, high school are really encouraging the kids to be washing their hands and...
Mr. Fox even wrote a song.
He did, of course he did.
Several community members, I'm sorry, Steven.
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie's absolutely right, in fact hospitals even are starting to move away from the sanitizers and it's all about the soap. But on that point, since we are an educational place, would it be helpful, you know, when you go into hospitals and for example, you see really great posters about the proper way to wash hands and the proper way to sneeze, is that something that we should consider doing?
Well, they do it in the... I know, I know, the elementary school is, she's...
I don't see it here in this one.
She does that, and I know our teachers have been working hard with it, actually our rate is very low compared, because they did, the secretary expressed it, an article about it and when superintendent and I got together and compared our notes, ours is low and I think it's because our adults are so active, they talk about it in the cafeteria, teachers talk about it in the classrooms and they, they're really, all of our custodians go around and wash the handles two and three times a day, because it is, it's your door handles, it's your...
faucet handles.
The faucet handles and they're really careful about it and our teachers are actively talking about it, about washing your hands, about using tissues, about using, coughing into your arms.
We did have a trainer come in last year, I believe, and run a workshop, believe it or not, on hygiene and how to sneeze and how to wash hands for the faculty so that they could be the turnkey people for the kids.
We had a trainer come in and work with the custodians on the same thing, not once but twice, they came in two times to work with our custodians.
There could be, there's a really fun session that hospitals do for, and public health folks do with these infrareds, so you have the kids and it'd be a great thing for the morning program or whatever, you have the kids wash their hands and then they are put under, they use infrared gel and it shows them how they did not wash their hands as well as they thought. And it's used for surgeons to teach them how to really wash hands properly. But, yeah, using the infrared technology though can be a real wake-up call to what happens in bathrooms, et cetera, and when kids go through that, I promise you, people then start to wash their hands after they go to the bathroom.
There's that Larson card where the guy walks out of the bathroom and the residents did not wash their hands, did not wash their hands, you know, it's that little wake-up, it's the most important thing they can be doing is washing their hands right now.
I know from experience that the physical education staff is addressing this as soon as today, so we're fighting it, hopefully we're coming out in some little bit better weather. This was senior night for the girls, we had a special presentation to Paul, one of our students, Paul Anderson, who did a wonderful job with the play as well, he got like a special T-shirt for his services that he's provided with us, videotaping games and it was just a nice moment and then obviously...
It's for computer science, yeah.
He was, really enjoyed that, I mean, that meant a lot to him to get that shirt and you guys to make a big deal out of it.
We actually made a phone call to Florida, we tried to get Joe, the bus driver, to come back and present it to him, but it just didn't work. But it was a nice night, again, senior nights are a little tricky because you have this emotional moment and then you gotta go play a game, so I'm glad to say that we did well. And then the boys, it was on the other end, it went pretty well and we did the cheerleaders at the same, on the same night, the cheerleaders went first and we had, I believe it was four seniors as well, of our cheerleaders, and this is just some of the athletes in action. The bottom right corner is the all-girls clinic, I believe we had six to ten elementary school girls that came and practiced with our JV, again, it's the first year, usually these things gain a little momentum as we go. We have a couple of our seniors in the pictures there with the senior girls up top and the boys in the candid shots. And this was the first responders' game, Mr. Malone's wearing his Pearson football shirt. We had the YouTube there and, you know, the fire department, the police and the ambulance, they're just great, they're just great sports about the whole thing, it really goes well, it's a highlight with the elementary school children to be able to watch the faculty and their parents play. And I believe this is Dr. Kent.
Thank you, Eric. Once again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I just wanted to present to you a recap of part of our budget building process that we discussed earlier and I have the two handouts... And I have the two handouts for your consideration. One comes from the Office of the State Controller, the Employee Retirement System Historical Report. And the other one comes from New York State Teachers Retirement System. And these two reports just give a little historical significance as we build our budget for 2018, 19. The increases in pension funding that the district has been required to pay for based on payroll. And so I wanted to bring to your attention that what we're looking at for 2018, 19 budget with the teachers' retirement system is a, an anticipated increase of 10.63 percent. And for the employees' retirement system, an anticipated increase of 15.7 percent, namely for tiers three and four. So if you think about it, for every dollar our staff earns, if they are in the employee retirement system such as a custodian or a clerical worker, almost 16 cents on the dollar is paid for retirement. And if they're a teacher, we're paying, out of a dollar, 10.63, rounded off, 11 cents on the dollar for the teacher retirement system. And I also wanted to just demonstrate the last, going back the last five years or five budgets, what the increases have been. And you can see how they've steadily increased, starting with the 2014, 15 year at 17.53 for teachers, 20.1 percent for employees. 15, 16 was 13.26 for teachers and administrators, I should say, and 18.6 for employees. 16, 17 was 11.2 percent, 72 percent for teachers and administrators and 15.8 percent for employees. Our current year, we're at 9.8 percent for teachers and administrators, 15.8 for employee staff. And so I just wanted to bring this to your attention. And some of what we've discussed earlier tonight, the superintendent has encouraged all of us to structure a budget that is as flat as possible, wholly flat as many lines as we can with no increases, so that we can absorb the increases that we expect to incur that will go well beyond the 2 percent. And one that I don't have on this chart that we did discuss earlier is health insurance. So again, I just wanted to let you see what some of the challenges are that we face, that we have no say in the matter. These are mandatory increases that we pay for. Some, some of what are called unfunded mandates, if you will. And thank you very much.
Good question. Those rates, are they the same in every school district?
Absolutely.
So they're set, they're set by the state and it's one rate for every school district?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Before we move into the consent agenda, I just wanted to report on a couple of board committee positions. Susan S., who's agreed to serve on the Wall of Honor Committee. Alex, who's also graciously volunteered for the EFPC Committee. And Diana will be serving on the Transportation Subcommittee. At this time, I also wanted to take a moment just to remind trustees that we do have a, excuse me, that Sag Harbor Schools has an established chain of command. So if you need to get in touch with an administrator or if you need to ask an administrator a question, please, let's go through the chain of command and start with the president. If she's not available, you can reach the vice president. She will then reach out to the superintendent and the superintendent will handle it from there.
So for the next two weeks, I'll question to go to you.
But then I'll just throw them onto her anyway, so.
We're on vacation next year.
If I'm going to move into the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve items number one through four?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor? Okay, items one through four, pass. Special education items number five through six, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Any discussion on special educated, education items five through six? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes you now, it's like. Business items number seven through nineteen. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And discussion?
Point of order, yeah. On the, on the issue in terms of the transportation presentation.
What number you, you have?
I'm sorry, it's number sixteen. So I just have a question on this. It would, you know, we also just had a conversation about this at the last meeting with the committee presented. And there were a lot of great questions on the board. I think it would be important for them to come and present. I assume we would have questions. So do we want to do it where the committee first would address our questions and then have the option to bring in the group that did the study? Or do we want to definitely make sure we have the people that did the study and the experts in this come in and present that?
If you're looking for a final presentation, my understanding that the way the RFP doesn't include a presentation, I think it's just the written report. So if there's something that you want a formal presentation to the board, we would have to then ask them for that and.
Well, I think Joe would be the opportunity to be a last question. Like, see with committee this week.
And I would, I would imagine that there may be couple who has questions as well. So I certainly would support having them come here because I wouldn't expect the committee to have an answer to any question we might have. And for us to move forward with the recommendations, we would need to do it pretty quickly. Is there a downside to having them come and present to the board?
I'm sure it's financial. Katie, or January, or whatever the.
So it's $900 with expenses.
Oh, to come and present?
Yes. Daily fee of $900 related. So half the day fee, less expensive.
They provide a very, very concrete, I've seen their work, I've seen lots of examples of their work. So they're going to provide, you know, ample data, you know, it'll be thick, it'll be, provide ample data. But I think that our culture at Sag Harbor is, our culture is used to having folks come and being able to field lots of questions and be able to look at the work. And so I think my recommendation is it may be worth the investment to have them come so that you can have the committee members here and you can have that robust conversation. Because that's, that's the culture of Sag Harbor.
Okay, then can we put it to a vote? All those in favor of requesting that the Transportation Advisory Services present their findings that a board meeting pursuant to half their daily rate and their related expenses?
Why half though, January, I'm sorry?
Because that's what the rate is.
It says a daily rate of.
That's what it means. They charge $100 a day, that's what that means.
So she said half?
Yeah.
The charge will be half day fee.
To come and present.
To come and present.
The last line says if we want them to come to the board, to present to the board.
I'm sorry, okay.
I just want to be sure we have the option to be able to do that.
The, would we want it in a traditional board setting? Or would we want to have it maybe half an hour before the meeting start, have a little, more of a workshop dialogue? Because a board setting doesn't necessarily allow the, if you have community members who have questions, it is, it's so structured and more formal. Sometimes we've had kind of a workshop discussion, doesn't have to be, you know, a long one, but it may, may allow for more of a dialogue, including engagement with the community unless, unless we don't want the community to be able to engage that way. I'm all for them coming, I'm just, I'm just teeing it up as board construction would be.
I don't think you have to decide that right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think as long as we can just go forward with getting a vote on having them do the presentation.
When you said board, board meeting, we don't have to worry about whether it's a workshop or not, is what you're saying?
No, I think you just have to secure that out.
But we've never allowed the public to ask questions directly to a presenter, so.
We have in the workshops we've run in the past.
Workshops?
Yes.
Board.
Right. There are, there have been workshops that have replaced the board meetings. And there have been workshops that have been a component of a board meeting. And they've simply been structured differently, but they're on a night of a board meeting and part of it is the workshop. So it, it's not as formal, it's more engaging. It, we used to do those, we did many of those during my tenure.
Do you have the samples of what kind of firms the public came and, and asked questions of?
I can, if you go into a search, you may find it on the website, the, the meeting minutes of it. But anyway, so it's, it just, it just means that it's a, it's a less formal, more engaging format. If we don't have to decide it now, we can discuss that later. I want to hold the discussion, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Either way.
Are they coming in before the survey or after the survey?
According to this, this is for a presentation to be done of their findings.
Their findings?
Right.
In other words, our timeline, I agree.
The timeline makes no sense in here, right?
No, our timeline is tight and makes perfect sense, but it's tight. So January, you, you need a vote now to approve to have the expenditure?
Sure.
Or have the option to?
She needs the will of the board.
I need the will of the board.
Sure.
Right. And, and so you're making that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
There you go.
All those in favor of having TAS come to provide a presentation in some form or another of their findings?
Aye.
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 Okay. And, and because it's a short timeline, I think we need to really have a discussion as to whether we're going to dedicate a portion of that board meeting to an open workshop that the public can ask questions directly to the presenter.
Kind of like you do.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you can have a, because transportation, open transportation committee meeting prior to a board meeting.
That would be very.
And they can, they can lead it and the board can be present. And you may want them to, to just present on their recommendation about what's going on, the board, the vote, the referendum in May. So I'm just, my only concern is that we're asking them to do two parts. There, which is why you see that accelerated timeline, is they're really doing two studies. One is what the recommendation is going to be for, for the May vote. And then they're doing a prolonged study. So that's why you see that short timeline, is they're doing a prolonged study for Sag Harbor on, you know, what the recommendations are on the other two big rocks. Like, how are we doing?
Right, so this is.
And what are the captures that we can have moving forward?
We focus on the immediacy, immediacy of hands.
For our budget purposes, we, we need them to do their survey, come and tell us their results, have a little bit of a discussion and, and put on for a budget vote in May only Rock One.
Right.
And, and worry about Rock Two and Three later. But I would much prefer that, I'm sorry, what is the name of the company?
TAS.
That the TAS representative that's going to come and only give us the results of the survey be standing there being pointed at than our administrators.
Right.
So I'd, I'd much rather they answer that.
Yeah, and we just all voted that they were going to come. But I have a question about the, their proposal, which we're voting on the contract tonight, right?
Mm-hmm.
According to the timeline in their proposal, it, it's based on that the acceptance of the TAS proposal happened January 18th, that they started the data collection in January and finished February 18th. And here it is the 12th of February. So it seems like we are almost four weeks later than this timeline. If that's the case, are they still looking at giving us a draft report in March 18th?
Yes.
Yes, in the answer to question number one.
Yes.
Not in question number two.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that, that they told us in their proposal they needed four more weeks to get it done by then. And what you're saying is that we don't, they're not going to hold us to this timeline and say, we're starting four weeks late, so we're good? You know, we're not good on the 18th?
Well, I could, they could have resent this to us and we probably should have had them do that for the Board of Education. And we'll have them resend one with, with the redone of the draft.
As long as, as long as the 18th, they can deliver all this by the 18th, even starting four weeks later than the proposal. I just am concerned that we're agreeing to proposal on a timeline that is now false, that's all.
We can, we can have them send another one prior to signing.
They said they'd have it by the 18th, Katie, right?
Yes.
So then that's it. That's it, it'll be here on the 18th.
Right. All I'm saying is that we have contracts with timelines.
We won't have, we won't have January sign a contract, we'll have them update the timeline for tomorrow.
That's great.
Okay, so can we vote on the contract now?
Yep.
And we will not sign until I make sure it's updated.
Yep.
All those in favor?
But we're, we're voting on a whole bunch of things and there may be some questions on some of the other ones.
Do you want to pull any other items out?
Yeah, I had, first of all, I wanted to say thank you so much to, to Sheba American Foundation for the $18,860 donation. It was, it was absolutely fantastic. So I just wanted to say thank you on that, that's it.
Okay, in response to business items number seven through number 19, is there any other discussion? Then can I get a motion to accept business items?
I'm sorry, you had a motion and a second, you just needed a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, then we are at the vote. All those in favor of items number seven through 19?
Aye.
Any opposed? Personnel actions, number 20 through 24, can I get a motion to approve?
I can have a question pulled out 23, please.
Can I get a motion to approve? Second.
Twenty to 22 and 24, is that the motion on the table now?
What number did you want pulled out?
23.
Oh, okay. So yeah, 21, 20 through 22, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 23, discussion?
I understand that this is a position that existed in the district before. Did, did the board ever approve the creation of this position?
I've not been able to research that, but we've never created, we've never had a position that we don't, we don't create position. That, that has been our strict policy for the four years I've been here.
No, no, I know that, but twice last year, I called the president of the school board because I noticed that physicians were being asked to put someone in a position and the position hadn't been created. And so then it was added to the, the agenda. We, we voted on creating the position and then approved it. So I don't remember this being created, which is why I asked. And I, just like the other two times last year, we added it to the agenda because it was just an oversight. I just want to make sure this position actually has been created before we fill in.
We, in my history, and I don't recall what you're telling me.
Mm-hmm.
In my four years here, we've never put peace on the agenda without creating a position. And you, that's been reflective, almost to a painful extent, that we always create positions. I, I don't have an answer to that question, but it will leave us without a website maintenance position.
I'm not suggesting, I, I had emailed this question as soon as I saw.
And I, as I said, we're, we've been down, we're down three positions right now. We didn't have our district clerk this entire week.
I know. No, I know, I know it's been slammed, I was just, just asking to answer that question. Okay. And then, can you just share where and when the position was posted?
Scott posted the position. Mr. Fisher, you posted the position and you had applicants for the position, correct?
I'm sorry.
You posted this position and you had applicants, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Where was it, was it, where was it posted besides our, our website?
It was just internal. It's a, it's a stipend, it's not a position.
Right, so it would just be for the internal staff? And just to confirm, the, the job description that, that I received tonight says that. requires good knowledge of website design and creation, good knowledge of current literature, sources of information and technical developments in the internet field. That's accurate?
Yes.
And, and it says additionally, good knowledge of principles, methods and techniques of website programming?
No, we're not doing any programming, so that, that piece does not apply. It's, it's template driven, so there's no, no coding that's taking place in programming necessarily.
Okay. And this would be a position that's paid for hours after the normal workday. If it goes to someone who is compensated for a full day of work, then this would be work done after the workday.
So for example, when I, if I can't get ahold of Scott and I have to call a snow day, this person gets ahold of all the news agencies, they do this email blast, these are, this is when Scott's in. I'm, I'm, I'm on video going to say that he is Jake from State Farm. Because I called Scott at so many odd hours of the night, or early in the morning, or on his way home from work, that I lovingly tell him to tell his wife it is Jake from State Farm, because we talk so much after hours. Because the email blasts, that's the time that I settle down and realize that email blasts have to go out or things have to be posted to the, um, website. And if I can't get ahold of Scott because he's out of touch, then I have to go to the next person. So that, in the past, was his former employee. Who, thank goodness, they're good about getting random calls from the superintendent between four and nine o'clock at night.
But this is just for emergencies and snow days?
No, no, it's also e-blasts, it's, things have to get posted to the web, things have to be taken off the web. Scott, I think you got three emails from me on Sunday night. Something had to be taken off the web, something had to be put on the web. It's a, it's a pretty spirited position.
So this wouldn't be just backup that Heather, this position requires her ongoing responsibilities? Because if it's just a backup or substitute, that's different than someone who has ongoing.
No, it will serve as a backup, but there's also going to be specific tasks assigned to that person on a regular basis ongoing moving forward.
Ongoing. That's, that's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, I unanimously think we should move along to vote.
Okay, number twenty-three, all those in favor?
I need a motion and a second.
Can I get a, a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, can, uh, all those in favor of appointing Mary Domcheck?
A hundred and twenty-seven percent.
All those opposed? Okay, and, uh, number twenty-four, can I get a motion to appoint Joseph Manta, substitute teacher?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I thought we did.
Cause she already did twenty-three.
Yeah, she's okay, twenty-four.
No, we did twenty to twenty-two.
Yeah, we did twenty-three.
Yeah, so twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Uh, all right.
I need a motion and a second.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Stay. Okay, moving on to items for, I'm sorry, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports from the shared decision making?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. My apologies, um, so shared decision making, we decided to opt, the students, when we met again, were like, not doing the cell phones. We've been talking about cell phones, we were both safe, the parents were worried about the cell phones. That was the student speaking at the committee meeting. So we actually focused on community building, make the middle school feel like a culture. So we talked about the Great Reading Day, um, Math Day, doing more Friday activities to get the kids in the building for a longer period of time and after hours. So we're planning on trying to make a map, map out a whole year of how we would do it so that, for actually implement. That's what we've been talking about.
Okay, thank you very much. Liaisons, any liaison reports? Was it Community Coalition?
You and I are.
Oh, Safe and Sag Harbor?
You were, yeah, that's Safe and Sag Harbor.
Oh. Okay, I reported last week, the next meeting's actually tomorrow night. And you're working on the PSA?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, moving on, uh, items for discussion. The first item for discussion is the position of a communication coordinator. Who would like to start the discussion? Chris?
What?
Would you like to start the discussion?
If you want me to voice my opinion.
I would love to.
I didn't know you were gonna have to do that, but thank you. I had shared with the board, I'll report this publicly, I've shared with the board, um, recently, the findings from the Communication Committee from two thousand and fourteen, because they had teed up this position initially. After doing, surveying parents, teachers and students, um, and putting together, uh, what I thought was, they did a great data analysis, which I, I did help with, but there were a lot of people on the team then. And then did a fuller presentation to the school board and superintended on three recommendations. One of them was to hire a communications coordinator. I don't know if that was the exact title, but something similar to that, with a, with a job description. So, um, so, and I personally think that we need to have one. And I would recommend we have one that has good, strong communication skills and background. I think we're fortunate enough to live in a community where there are a lot of people who have done this professionally, who may be looking to earn a stipend and are embedded. So I, uh.
Do, do you think it should be a full-time position?
The, I, I think we didn't do our due diligence to follow up, frankly, because that, what was supposed to happen was, it was supposed to be a survey, recommendations, changes made, and then a survey again, because ultimately, we are tasked with as much as possible making data-driven decisions. And many districts do surveys regularly in order to have kind of data help guide them. And we tend not to do it as much as I think we could here. So, um, at the time, there were many, many communication gaps. I think our administrators and staff have worked really hard and been very successful in closing many of them. That being said, the most recent conversations with administrators on Friday, I would say sixty or seventy percent of the conversations heated up, ended up getting around communication issues, so I, I do think we need additional help there. How much help, I'm not sure, but I do think we need someone who, that, that the position, I, I would welcome the position to be posted to see who in our community might be able to, to rise up to that, to, to the position, since it is a specific skill set and experience.
Chris, do you have a concern though, because if it is more than seventeen and a half hours a week, it, it becomes a civil service position. We have to hire off a civil service list, then we have to hire off whoever has the highest grade on that civil service for all of Suffolk County. We don't hire specifically to Sag Harbor. Anything that has communication in it, then it becomes, it's owned by civil service.
Right.
And if we then decide that we wanna hire somebody for less than seventeen and a half hours, civil service will always be watching. And, and then we, then it becomes an administrator's challenge to be working all the time to make sure that person never rises above. So, you know, then you're down to somebody working really ten or twelve hours a week. Because they, you never want them to lift above that, because civil service will come in and, and shut you down on that. So, when we say we have talented people in our community, I was right there with you. I started my job right after you did this oversight, and this was our first year's challenge. And I had, I had to learn what, where the barriers were. And it's, there's just practical barriers. It is, it's owned, that position's owned by civil service. We have to hire off their list. Then we have to hire off out of Suffolk County, at that number. So, we could be selecting from somebody Suffolk County-wide, and they, they own it, it's theirs. It's, it's, it's like a union. You know, so it's, you know, it's, it, it, in theory, it's great, but in reality, that's who, that's who you have to hire, we don't get to hire somebody.
I, I, I hear your concern, I think it's really legitimate, I agree with you. So, I, I'm, I'm less concerned, but you're, you're in the building and I'm not, I'm less concerned about having someone and keeping them under seventeen. But, um, I just think that if we're gonna create a new position and we know that this is a pain point in the district, it would be interesting to see who in the community might be, um, excited about it and have the skill set and experience. Because it is a, it's a professional skill set.
Twelve hours a week, though?
I didn't, it, the number wasn't twelve, it was seventeen and a half.
Okay, so seventeen in order to keep under that half? I don't know if you're going to find someone stepping forth from the community for seventeen hours a week that does not have a pulse on this building.
You know, I don't know, but my, but you know what? You don't know if you don't try, we don't know. If we posted it and we got some candidates' grade, if we didn't, then we could go to Plan B. But there may be people who are involved in our school district, who are not working full-time, or who are consultants doing other things that would have that time, who are already going to events and already know our district. But again, it's just, you know, I, uh, I, I used to run communication divisions of companies and PR divisions, and so maybe I'm a little closer to it, but I understand that it is a specific skill set. And so I, uh, my only suggestion is, because we've waited four years, it's been four years, almost since the original suggestion, that maybe it makes sense to wait a little while longer and see if we can get some, someone to step up who might have that experience. But anyway, that's just my suggestion.
Susan?
Well, I mean, I think I raised this at the last meeting. I think my biggest concern, I'd like to see, uh, data or feedback or survey of exactly where we're falling short, so that we can figure out what this position or part of position should be focused on. Because as I recall, there was that committee which I was on, but it did all that work. I remember being in the audience when they were presenting. And you guys, the school, did do a lot of the things that were suggested. The new, the website was overhauled, there have been a number of new, uh, social media channels that have been, uh, created and attempts to, um, there have been much more in terms of the e-blasts, et cetera. So, I guess one of the things I'd be curious about is, if I recall correctly, that committee or the school prior, and I think this is before you came, had done a survey about where people thought
They did.
the knees were, and that's what, that's where those suggestions came out of. Seems to me, now that all that work has been done, maybe what we need to do is another survey to find out where the issues are. Um, and the other thing I had raised before is, and I know Stephanie poo-pooed this, but it's, it's a communications plan. And because when you have a strategic communications plan, you, it's, it's about figuring out what your goals are, what the objectives are. And, uh, uh, part of that is basically turning all of your, basically every potential employee in this building is a potential communicator for the district. And so, you know, there's that piece of it as well. And I think that the school is already doing a piece of that with conversations with administrators and the key communicators meetings. But there, you, we still keep seeing that there's areas, and obviously, maybe we can never fix everything, because this day and age, it's a little crazy. But to get a better handle on what is needed, so that we can get a better sense of how to fill that gap.
Okay, so, so give me a, a communication coordinator and I'll start doing that. Just eleven hours a week, that's all I'm asking for. Let's not, like, just, you know, there's a Babar the Elephant, where we're gonna have a committee to discuss the options and think about it while the war's going on. While there's no war going on, we're gonna have a committee that talks about, so give me eleven hours, just every single week, just to add a little something, something, that's my recommendation.
Alex?
Yeah, what, can we just go over again what the original proposal was for this?
You're talking about the one from two thousand and fourteen?
Well, the, are we, this is an alternative that you're suggesting, right?
What was my recommendation? My recommendation was we have, in the budget, currently in the budget, that we haven't touched, we have fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
With that fifty thousand dollars, I would like to take district clerk, not talking about a person, I'm talking about a position, from twenty-nine, um, hours a week to forty hours a week, add eleven more hours.
Okay.
That is gonna come with some benefit costs too, I understand that. And then make that person district clerk plus communication coordinator. Not a PR specialist, I have PR specialists, I have that in syntax. Syntax is my PR specialist. So they handle emergencies, they handle press releases, they handle all my big lifts. So eleven hours a week, just to coordinate all the communication. And with that fifty thousand dollars, I still have enough left to have, in each building, a communication gatherer, a little stipend, for someone to gather all the communication and send it to my, my communication coordinator, so that they can just send out, like on Sunday nights, hey, here's what's happening this week in your building. Here's what's happening district-wide. Middle school, here's what's happening in your building, here's what's happening district-wide. Elementary, here's what's happening in your building, here's what's happening district-wide. So nobody forgets. And also, they can go to the administrators, science fair, and this is happening at the same time, you guys might wanna pull that apart. That's all.
Isn't that done now and that's part of people's jobs? Why would we be paying an extra stipend for that?
It's not done now.
It's, it's really hard, because our, the administrators are, they get here at, at seven o'clock in the morning and they are running all day long. Their jobs are very, very hard. And even though we meet at cabinet once a week and we exchange information, things get missed sometimes. It, it happens, because we're really busy. And we are adding so many beautiful things, there's so many clubs, so many organizations, so many great things happening. You wanna be able to communicate that out to the public. And also, sometimes, things change. There'll be an athletic, like, um, we do a Whaler Weekly. And then we will also have things happening, um, for the high school and for the middle school and for the elementary. It's, it's, it's hard to sometimes get all of the wires interspraced. And there's, there's play, there's music, there's arts, you know, there's the Rudishan Trust, things that are happening. That takes a lot of coordination, because there is so much good happening in the school district.
I think rather than getting fifteen different e-blasts, the idea is to get one
For the week.
letter on a Friday afternoon, that you can.
I'm not sure that's what parents want, though.
Isn't that what the upcoming events emails that come out already do?
But the, they, but often, they, they may be missing time, place, you know, who, what, where, when, why, I think. But now I'm talking myself into, Katie, why don't you do that? I have to tell you, there's only twenty-four hours in every day.
You'd need more information. So, for instance, Matt and Jeff presented their upcoming events tonight. I reached down five times, I went, oh, parent-teacher conference.
I did too.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, the wax museum, I, I would love to go see the kids if I could sneak out of school. And then Matt kept talking, and then I go and I write a college night at Pearson on March sixth. Okay, I have seven other things to do on March sixth. So maybe I would have only had six conflicts if I put it in my book. That communication, yes, you can, upcoming events, I love that Scott does that, you press the button. And I love, within one second, I said, maybe we should send that out in two languages. And it got fixed, and I love that everything, everybody gives Scott, he sends out. And I bet that everybody except Eric, because you have to live in your own wonderful
He does Whaler Weekly.
Whaler Weekly, that I can't imagine how many hours you're spending. But, but Mike goes to Scott, I'm guessing, and says, my IB meeting is this night, send this for me?
Mike does his own stuff.
Oh, you do your own stuff?
The, it's one for the school, elementary school, they send a lot of their own.
Their own. But if, if one person could filter that all and sum that all up, that, that is giving me more details. That the college night at Pearson, tell me what time it starts? And this isn't a trick question. Anybody? Six-thirty, we think, right?
No, we know, I think so.
Okay, but do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but, but I, I, we don't know. Do we know that parents want one announcement on a Sunday night? We don't know that, in fact, but what, what I'm hearing at the administrators' meetings is that's not the case. So, back to Susan's point, which I think is a good one, is we just have to make sure that we really understand what the different constituencies really want.
Well, in the, in the, in those meetings, remember, everybody had a different opinion?
No.
Yes, you and I sat in those meetings together, one parent.
No, no, I'm talking about the meeting Friday I went to.
But one parent might want email communication, and the other one wants text, and the other one's really pissed off when it snows and they get woken up, so.
But that's, but that's why when you do a survey.
Nobody's ever gonna agree.
That's why when you do a survey and you get two hundred and forty-eight students and two hundred and twenty parents, it's not five sitting in a room, one saying vanilla ice cream, one saying chocolate, but that, anyway.
I'm agreeing with you on the survey, I, but I would like some assistance on doing the survey.
Right, but you said we can have up to seventeen hours and you're suggesting an eleven-hour solution.
I'm, eleven hours to start with, with, well, it's for the year, but I, I think that that's a lift. That'll, that'll help me get going, and that person can coordinate a survey, and then they can also start doing weekly, it's ele, it's eleven more hours.
I agree with Stephanie, I, I support the recommendation.
It's a start. It's four years ago that we did this, and we've done a lot of good things, let's just. do something.
I have a hard time saying we have to move fast because we're, we're on the edge here when, this was a suggestion four years ago and nothing was done about this position. So I'm, I'm suggesting it's better to do it right since we were willing to wait four years.
So you're...
Because you, maybe it didn't have the person in-house that could do it.
Let me just clarify, you're, in your opinion, the next step should be to ser, do a survey?
Have another survey.
Yeah, I, I think that right now we do need help, but I think the right way to do it is, is to post the position. I do.
So not do a survey?
No, I, I didn't say that. I think that we need a survey to inform on an ongoing basis what, what gaps we've closed and are there areas in which we need to increase focus. That being said, we still need some help right now.
We do.
I just disagree, I just disagree with, with the, this direction. I think there's a better way to go, but that's just one out of seven.
So I, but I'm trying to get everybody's opinions here. So in your opinion, the first thing we should do is...
Post the, post the position.
Is post the position?
Yes.
Now, so we'd be posting the position without the results of the survey so that we wouldn't know what we'd be posting the position for?
What I'm hearing from Katie is she has work today that she needs help with.
Okay.
So that person would be someone who's qualified to do that work and also qualified that whatever would come up in a survey, she, they would be able to do because they have good communication, you know, background.
Okay, so post the position, find someone to fill a position, then we should conduct a survey.
And that's only based on, I'm hearing from the superintendent that we can't wait, that we need to, to move on this quickly.
So that'd be less than seventeen hours a week?
Yes, which is what you're suggesting anyway.
Well...
Again, I'm one of seven.
Well, we're not making any decisions, we're just having conversation.
Um, I, I, first of all, I'd like to see, I would like to see us get some, the survey done work because as I recall, when the committee did come out with that, Chris, and again, this is just recollection, so it could be wrong, was that there was a lot of controversy about bringing in what I believe at that time was being discussed, he's a full-time person, if I remember correctly, right? So there's a lot of controversy about adding that, adding that to the budget. And if I remember correctly, there was a lot of work done to try to address the issues that were raised without bringing in a full-time person. That's my recollection, which is what's been done, correct?
No, we haven't done anything. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars and it's four years later and we have done zero.
No, that's not true.
No, the website's been...
Yes, I understand, but we haven't put a human being in.
So there, there's new social media, I, I went through a bunch of things.
We get that Susan, but we don't have a human being. What we're saying is that we have a person who's a part-time position, who's more than capable of picking up a few hours, that you can take a portion of the money in the budget that then you can later, if you really want to, do a survey, find a full-time person and undo what you're doing temporarily.
I'm not suggesting a full-time person, I'm just saying what the history was. And I was just explaining why there was controversy about that position not being filled and other people stepped up and did a lot of work of things that happened. And so what I'm curious about is I'd like to know where the gaps are, what did we do well, what, where do we need to do more work? Would be a survey.
That would be a survey.
And what I'm hearing from Katie is that she needs help and support doing that. So I guess I wonder if maybe a compromised position is, is doing something like this temporarily to then be able to gather some data about how we move forward. Right?
Susan?
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation.
There's a motion on the table to approve the superintendent's recommendation of creating a communications position.
A communication coordinator?
So the proposal is not temporary, it would be a full-time additional position that is, and if...
No, no.
No, but I'm saying this is permanent, adding hours to an existing person.
Piloting it, that was my recommendation, was to pilot this through the end of the year.
Pilot temporary.
Pilot this through the end of the year.
So the motion on the floor is a motion in favor of creating a pilot position for a communications coordinator.
Eleven hours.
At eleven hours.
And can you write the cost? Usually we would like to have the cost.
Per week at...
All the, yeah, all the, everyone has the costs.
No, I'm saying it so that people watching will know what we're, what we're voting on.
I can pull it up on my phone.
Well, and just, it's a point, a point of clarity, this was an item for discussion and we're moving to actually creating a new position right now without having it posted and on agenda.
They can go on another...
No, I'm just clarifying that because that's unusual.
I made a vote because I think you talked about it a lot.
And I have to, I have to observe more.
It seems like everybody's saying the same thing, that's needed now and this is a pilot program and this is better than creating a full-time position and in my opinion, better than doing a survey. We can see how that works out and report back at the end of the pilot period.
Well, hold on, then we're hearing something a little different because I thought what Katie said...
Victoria has, Victoria, you have my wording on the last motion?
Pilot temporary.
Yeah. Alex's motion.
Can you read, can you read the motion on the table, please? Thank you.
Alex's motion to go forward with the position that, with Katie's recommendation.
Okay, but was he, can you, if we're gonna vote on it, we need to know what it is specifically.
The wording is for...
How do you want?
Do you have that?
How do, how do you want to word?
A, a, a motion in favor of creating a pilot communication coordinator position for eleven hours.
How many hours do you need, Katie? How many, what's, what's, what's the number?
The district clerk is a, is a twenty-nine and, and I'm looking to make it, bring it to forty hours, but there's related costs and I wanna make sure I'm completely transparent on it.
Okay, but I, I, I'm sorry because we're, we're trying to talk about a position and not a person. And I'm trying to stay that way.
Yeah.
But if you add twenty-nine and eleven, you get forty.
Yeah.
It is a pilot, pilot communication coordinator position, which if approved tonight could start tomorrow and we're in February and the school year ends June thirtieth.
Right.
And then effective July first, you would have to make a new decision or the position that...
That's right.
Was given benefits based on the increased eleven hours will be ungiven benefits and get a Cobra bill in the mail. So I'm just being clear.
I have a, just a point of information question. So if we move forward with the motion as was just written, is one of the things you're gonna have that individual do is gather information, do a survey so we can figure out those gaps?
Yes, yes, yes.
If that's the case, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be the first thing they...
Why do you need the number? There's someone's in that position already.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of creating the pilot position of a communications coordinator?
For eleven hours.
For eleven hours. All those in favor?
I, I need a second, I'm sorry, I need a second.
I second it.
I should use a second?
January, I'll second.
We haven't gotten the cost yet.
I'm, I'm, I'm working.
We're voting though.
But we're supposed, when you vote on creating a new position, it's supposed...
You can vote no if you want to.
No, I understand that, but...
There's someone in the position already, so...
No, there's no one in the position already.
But this is, this is a...
There's no one in the position.
There's a twenty-nine hour position that's going up to forty.
Right, but the eleven hours is a brand-new position.
But it's gonna be paid at the same rate that the twenty-nine hours are paid.
It's a separate position.
Anybody have their...
And so when you vote on a new position being created...
Well, this is when you need Jennifer, I just texted her and asked her, she could calculate it and send it back, but she's not sending it to me fast enough.
I have it, I sent it to you guys. You all have it, everybody has it.
Thank you. So, um...
And that includes the additional benefit costs?
Yeah, everything's there.
Can you just do that times eleven?
It just needs to be part of, I know, it's supposed to be part of what is when and what we vote on publicly.
No, rolling is twenty-eight times eleven, thank you, and that would be, but that would be a week. Okay, can I give you the answer? It's three hundred and eight dollars a week for however many weeks starting Monday until June thirtieth.
But there is related costs.
There's a related cost.
That...
It's my hand, let's not open it.
When did you send an email?
There was an email last Wednesday.
I think it was two Wednesdays ago.
It went to the whole board?
Yes.
It was in the Wednesday letter?
It was in the Wednesday letter.
Okay.
Two weeks ago?
And it has my hand on it. Yeah, and it's, it has the MOA, it's the MOA, it has the...
It's SAG-Harbor School.
So the Wednesday letters, it should be there. Are you, are you on that?
But yeah, but then again, the number you're searching for is gonna be pro-rated with a waiting period for benefits?
Yeah, but I did, I think they did pro-rate it.
For how long is that waiting period? The school year might be over by the time the eligibility gets, gets in.
February seventh, right?
No, it must've been the week before. When was our board meeting?
It was a week ago, it was the fifth.
No, it was, so it was the week before that, so it must've been the first, sorry.
Okay, why don't you just tell us how the rate is calculated?
Yeah, just, just when you, when you create a new position and you're voting on it, the public should know what, how much you're voting on.
It's twenty-eight dollars an hour times eleven hours, it's three hundred and eight dollars a week.
Three hundred and eight dollars a week. Um, plus it, there's a lift in TRS, the, or ERS and, um...
It goes up for, it's gonna go from fifty percent to eighty percent.
Correct, for, for, for the remainder of the year for that, for the health insurance. We can get it there.
You wanna give an estimate and then when the meeting minutes get posted, you can...
I think it's thirteen thousand dollars.
Approximately thirteen thousand.
Approximately thirteen thousand dollars.
Over a year.
For the remainder of the year.
Between now and the end of the year.
Okay, so you got fifty in the budget, you haven't used a penny.
All right, all those in favor of, of creating the position at approximately thirteen thousand, I will make sure that when the memo, when the minutes go through, I will insert the exact number for all board members to approve. All those in favor of creating the position, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'd like to abstain because I feel that I don't have the information I would like on this question.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item of discussion, we will do this very quickly. I have, every, you should all have a copy of the Board of Education's internal policies regarding resignations and dismissals. The second, I guess it's not, yeah, okay, it's the second to last paragraph, I've added a few words to ensure that we are in, um, we're in, with the open meetings law and the words I put in are applicants for appointment shall be interviewed in an open public meeting pursuant to open meetings law. This is just for discussion, if you guys wanna review this, come up with your own language, it's literally adding three sections of edu, one section of education law and...